I'll call this meeting into order. This is a legally constituted meeting of the Town of Chi-Lai Planning Board. Legal notice of this meeting has been posted in the Gates Chi-Lai News and on the bulletin board in the front vestibule of the Town Hall. Please silence or turn off all your pagers and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In the event of an emergency, please use the exits in the front and the rear of the room. We will proceed with the agenda in the order in which it was published unless otherwise stated. When called, please proceed to the podium, state your name. If you're representing an applicant, indicate the applicant's name and review the details of the application. Planning Board members and side table participants will address questions and concerns to the applicant or their representative. Upon completion of comments from the board and side table, anyone wishing to comment on the application will be heard. If you wish to speak, please wait to be recognized by the chairperson, stand, state your name and address for the record. Address all comments and questions to the chairperson and keep comments pertinent to the application being heard. I'll now introduce the board members and the side table participants. To my far left is Joe Defendis, Matt Emmons, Al Helaby, and Mike Nyhan, Glenn Hyde, David Cross, and Paul Blozier. Our side table, our Assistant Town Council is Eric Stowe. Our Building Department Manager is Paul Wanzinreid, and our Town Engineer is Michael Hanscom. Our Recording Secretary tonight is Sandra Hewlett. Our first application is the application of Filon Properties Limited, 70 Quail Lane, Rochester, New York, 14624, owner, for A, preliminary subdivision approval of 23 lots to be known as 93 King Road Subdivision, and B, preliminary site plan approval to erect 10 duplex and three single-family units at property located at 93 King Road in R-115 District.
Good evening. My name is Mike Ritchie. I'm from Cost and Engineering, representing Filon Properties. Like you'd stated, I am here tonight requesting preliminary subdivision and site plan approval for the 23 single-family lots which I have attached to the board. This planning board might remember, this was in front of you previously in the spring as a part of the incentive zoning application. The Town Board approved the incentive zoning at their May meeting. Since then, we've had to get some technical information and work through some site plans. The site plans we submitted to the board are fairly consistent, I would say generally consistent, with the plan that was presented during the incentive zoning process. We worked, the developer worked with an architect and got a more real footprint, which is actually smaller than the one that was presented during the incentive zoning process. The setbacks and densities are all within the approved limits that were proposed at incentive zoning. We've submitted plans to Monroe County Water Authority, Health Department, Pure Waters, Monroe County DOT, and are awaiting comments from them. We have received comments from the town engineer. We responded to the first round, and then a subsequent second round of comments was circulated. The remaining comments are technical in nature. I think generally, you know, there were no major showstoppers saying, you know, the way we have it laid out or designed can't be done. It's just a matter of, one, you know, getting the homeowners association documents drawn up by an attorney, reviewed by the town's attorney. There's an existing federal wetland in the ditch that runs, basically separating the duplexes from the single-family. Town engineer asked that we get confirmation from the DEC that that is not part of a larger DEC wetland, so our wetland consultant is currently corresponding with them and will provide that information when available. Some minor detail changes from the plan that was submitted as part of the incentive zoning. The stormwater management pond has been pushed back to the southwest corner of the property, better for drainage. We've also revised that, you know, slightly per the town engineer's comments. As was required or requested, we've removed the right-of-way from the process, so it'll be a private road. It'll be a dedicated sewer and dedicated water. We'll have to work out those details with the town and the water authorities. But with that, and I think generally, like I said when I started out, it's consistent with what has been proposed the whole time. We're not doing any sort of bait and switch or, you know, asking for more than what was previously discussed. So with that, I'll open it up to any board comments or questions.
Okay. Just remind me, each one of these lots and the buildings will be sold, correct? They're not rentals?
Correct. And these are subdivision lots, so they're all the lots, every single unit will be its own separate lot for sale.
Okay. Thank you.
10 duplexes and three singles, right?
Correct. Well, no. You got the...
There'll be 20 duplex lots.
Wait, three. Joe?
No, I'm fine.
Questions, man?
Not really. I guess just that I would agree with what you said is there's been a lot of, I won't say a lot of back and forth, but you came in early, asked questions for the incentive zoning, addressed everything that we've, I think, we brought to you in general. You were looking at a cross-the-road tour early on, that's been mixed, so, and you've right-sized these lots, taken all the comments into account. And I did see your responses here. And I would tend to agree. I don't, I'm not sure unless someone else sees anything on here that's a showstopper. Still some things to work through, but for preliminary, I don't see any issues, so I'm good right now.
Okay.
The only question I got from Michael Hanscom. Michael, are you satisfied with their reply as far as where they're at with us?
All right. That's all I get.
I'm good for now.
Okay.
I have nothing additional.
Okay. All right. And the HOA is being formed now, and that will need to be in place prior to the sale of any single lot, correct?
Correct.
You'll have that in time?
Yes, and it's been discussed as, Dave Lindsey had mentioned that, you know, prior to any final approval being granted, there's going to need to be something that's presented to the town attorney for the review.
Okay. All right. And you were going to show a street light and then just maybe missing it?
Yeah.
You wanted a street light at King Road and the private drive?
A drafting error, it was just a layer that was turned off. Just one street light showing on the property. We'll make sure it's cut off so it doesn't glare too much into King Road. More, kind of illuminating the entrance, not meant to light up the whole neighborhood type thing.
Correct. And there will be no lighting in the neighborhood, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Anything else from the side table before I open to public comment?
No.
Okay. This time, I will open the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the audience? Yes, sir. Just do your name and your address for the record.
Hello? Kim Capellas, 110 King Road. I own the property directly across from this development and to the west of Roberto Drive. I guess my biggest concern is because it's already been decided, right, that the incentive money is being spent on the sidewalk fund? Is that correct?
I'm not sure where the Town Board is going to spend the money. The incentive zoning has been approved though by the Town Board.
Okay, so that amount is determined, it's like $23,000, a thousand per unit? Is that correct?
Again, I don't have that record in front of me, but it is part of the public record that the Town Board...
You don't know that?
No.
Okay. Well, it seems to me that if the incentive money has been generated by this project, that the money should go back into this area. I don't know who we could pass that along to, somebody? That suggestion, that seems to make sense to me. I mean, you're taking something away a little bit here, you know, the open land, that incentive money could be put back into this area specifically. And I have a suggestion on where that might be because I have a little concern about the view of the back of these condos from King Road. And as you come down Roberto Drive, anybody who lives on Roberto Drive is going to see, I'll point this out, right here. This will be the view, the back, the back of these, those two family or condos or whatever you want to call them. And oftentimes, if you see condos or townhomes like this, they don't put much emphasis on the appearance of the backyards. And what happens is you get a flimsy divider between the two, and then you get a bunch of bulbous kid toys of various colors and storage areas because these generally don't have a lot of storage to begin with, so people tend to put their stuff behind there. So I suggest or hope that you'll consider putting some kind of a fence maybe there or raising a berm or planting some trees would be nice. You know, I don't know if the, does the town have like a landscape designer or someone they consult on, in these regards? Do you know?
Yes, the town does have a conservation board that reviews the plans.
Conservation board makes these suggestions?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a meeting on that from the conservation board regarding this project, or can I make a suggestion here? I mean, I don't want to take up too much time if it's irrelevant.
No, we'd love to hear your suggestion.
Okay. Well, I, I don't know if you noticed, but on my property, when the first Filon development went in, I planted 200 pine trees all around the border of my property. And it was interesting that a lot of the, my new neighbor said Filon planted them. I'm like, oh, no, no he didn't. I planted these trees at my own expense because I felt like there needed to be a natural division between my property and the backs, particularly the backs of these homes. And now they're nice mature trees and it makes a nice division. Now, I planted a lot of blue spruce trees so that, you know, the division, the border exists throughout the whole year instead of just when leaves fall. So I would suggest evergreens be planted and not abrevites because a deer will eat them, and probably not blue spruce because they're slower growers, but white spruce is what I would suggest that you plant because a deer won't eat them, they're relatively fast growers, and they don't have to be planted as trees this tall. If you plant these trees this tall, it'll catch up to a tree this tall in no time because there's less shock to the tree. And I'm hoping the conservation board will understand that and know this. But I would be, you know, I'm not against development. You know, I've done some additions on my own home and I understand that this town is growing and I assume that there's going to be an increase in the tax base as a result of this? Is that correct? Do we get taxes? Do I save money from this?
I have no idea if you'll save money. Yes, these lots are taxed. I have no idea if you're going to save money. Yes, these lots are taxed.
So there are, they are going to be paying taxes on this, I'm assuming. Now, when these lots are designated and before they're built on, do they start paying taxes on this money, on these lots immediately before they're developed or only after they're developed? How does that work? Does anyone know?
The land is already being taxed, but as the lots are developed and as the CFO is submitted, the assessment will be done on each particular parcel or building that is being built, each home.
So as soon as this is approved, they start paying taxes on the lots?
They're already paying taxes right now on the property.
Yeah, on the whole property?
Right.
But on the individual lots, are they paying?
No, no they're not. Once they, once they develop the property and they transfer the ownership to an owner, then they will receive an assessment for the house that's being built.
Okay.
That's what they'll be taxed on.
So, but I understand that this is, this is farmland now, or it was. So now it's zoned residential, correct? And their lots are subdivided out? Each one of these lots is worth a lot more than now that you, that the zoning board has approved, that they're worth more money now?
I don't assess lots, sir. I have no idea. That can be your statement if you like, but...
No, no.
That's what our town assessor's for. They're the person that will assess these lots and determine their value.
Well, I mean, I just, I'm trying to, I guess my point is, you know, how much money is being made and the incentive amount, where does that go? Can we put it back into this area? And if there's some way of blocking or designing these in such a way that you don't see the backs of these condominiums? Because, I mean, everybody coming in to downtown, to Chi-Lai is going to see the backs of these coming from the west. They're going to see it. I think it's just an ugly view. And that's what I look, when I drink my coffee and I look out of my front window, that's what I see, you know? And I have, I'm concerned about that.
Okay.
Let me see if I have anything else. I probably do, but I've taken up enough time, and I guess this is not relevant to this board, some of the questions I have, and I guess I'll save them. All right, well, I guess that's all I have for the moment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments from the audience?
Excuse me. Thanks. Good evening, everyone. My name is Brian Myster. I live at 4 Roberto Drive, so I'm in that neighborhood right across the street. And I just have a couple of questions that maybe the gentleman could actually answer because I thought he said something that rung true. Right now, we've been dealing with a lot of water, so I'm backed right up to that large retention pond. And I was just talking with several of our neighbors, and we've seen the waters level, water levels this year go up at least a foot or more, and that's taking away some of the property that's there. Now, I know it's been a really wet year and so on and so forth, but I guess I'm curious, as I look at this, have, I say, he mentioned like some retention ponds. Has there been consideration to make sure that as that water is running out of that large, the one that's backed up to the railroad tracks, that that water has a place to go? Because I also hear from some of my neighbors over here who live on the other side, that water for them has been an issue for a long time. Well, now if we build up that area, obviously, that's going to push water back into our area. So, and I saw you raise your hand. I don't know if you want to speak to that a little bit, but that was my question, just what are we going to do about water for the other side of King Road?
So yes, the whole water, stormwater prevention plan, there is a plan that has been updated and will be reviewed by our town engineer. Before they'll be able to build this, they will have to show where all of the water will run from this development, where it will be going to.
Okay.
Part of the, that's part of the plan.
Is that something that gets, like at least, is that another meeting? Is kind of what Kim...
No, that's what the town engineer does outside of this meeting, working with the engineers from the development.
Okay. Does any of that stuff get posted online or anything like that? Are we, access none of that information?
No, that does not get posted online.
So I got to just trust that it's going to all work out?
Well, if you're an engineer, you understand all of it that's on there?
Well, I, we won't get into what I do for a living, that's not the point. But if my water levels go up, so do I come back to this meeting or another meeting? You see what I mean? This is, because we're already having a problem, and I've already tried to discuss this with Dave Lindsey, and I've received a lot of, well, first, changes of perspective, changes of minds, then flat-out refusals, and then dishonest, there's some other issues that I have there, but at some point, I need to know who to go to next if people aren't going to step up and do their, their jobs.
You would go to the town, not to this board?
Okay, that's what I need to know. Thank you.
I live at 115 King Road. I'll be the house to the left of the three homes. One of the greatest things about where I live was you couldn't build there. It wasn't zoned for a building. And so it was really nice not having any neighbors for 20 some odd years. I understand that, you know, Chi-Lai, like we all know, is growing and we have to develop it, but you're taking a lot of the greenery away. Every time I turn around, somebody's building something. Down in King Road and Union, you know, there was a house that was dilapidated for years and they tore it down and they built two new homes and they're building three homes behind there. We already have a traffic problem on our street. We all know it's the quickest way to get from, you know, Chi-Lai Avenue around town and things like that. So is there any plan on how we might be able to, or what we're going to be doing with this influx of traffic right here? I mean, when the train gets stuck on those railroad tracks right there, you can't get down there. It gets backed up to my house. People aren't going to be able to get out of their driveway there.
Right. So yes, the county does review this plan and they do review the traffic and estimate what it would be for these number of lots, and the county is responsible for maintaining that traffic and any improvements to the road as a result of any increased traffic.
So it's the county?
So that is, yes, and that is something that they do monitor, and they do review these plans and provide those comments to the town.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments or questions from the audience? Yes, sir.
My name's Richard Seon. My address is 115 King Road. That was my wife just up here a second ago. Yeah, I just had a thought or suggestion pertaining to the borders of the subdivision. I don't know, is it their normal practice that they just remove all the vegetation and trees and is everything just kind of leveled up? Leveld, or can, can we retain, you know, the impacts to the existing vegetation and trees and whatnot around the borders? I don't know. I think it might dress, dress the area up some, you know, and improve the look of things if we have some mature trees that can stay intact.
So you're right to the left of the first home there in King Road, the first new home, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. They are maintain, I don't know what trees they're maintaining, they are showing on their plans that they're maintaining some existing trees, but when we review the landscape portion of their plan, that'll be part of what we'll look at is screening that's already been mentioned in the back of those townhomes as well. Single-family homes would be along King Road.
Yes.
All good comments?
The other thing to add to that too is that there's significant grading that needs to happen to achieve that drainage, right? So that's why that needs to be removed more than needed.
In regards to the drainage and the existing state wetland, there's documented wetlands running through the subdivision. I believe there's like a permit or application that needs to be applied for with the, with the state?
Correct. A delineation of the wetlands still needs to be submitted. They will be submitted, and then all necessary permits will need to be obtained before they'll be able to build in there. As part of the approval process with our engineer.
Mainly to minimize changes or impacts to the drainage and wetland?
Correct.
As long as we're not going to have more, you know, standing water in the backyards of, you know, 115 and 118, and I think my, my neighbor Steve DeHaven has some water backing up sometimes in his property. So I agree, it's a waterfall or rainfall definitely fills, fills in our yards a little bit with standing water. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Larry Johnston from 154 King Road. I live about halfway down the road, right next to Gilead Hill subdivision back there, and I've got, I'm going to reiterate the same thing that was said about the flooding. It's not just around that area right there, but that whole street is very low. It's, elevation is very, very low. Also, part of the problem is there's an artesian well that runs through that area, through the center of the street, through what actually runs right through my yard, across into, back over behind these houses, maybe a little bit farther west than what's shown on that picture. And that's a concern of mine because if they're going to take this water and push it someplace else, those ponds need to be of the appropriate size in order to retain that water, in order for everything downstream to be absorbed. When they built the housing tract behind me at Gilead Hill, they had originally planned two ponds, a retention pond and a detention pond. Once the building department started to take a look at it, they realized that that wasn't enough. They ended up changing the whole design and making it a five-acre pond in order to hold all the water back long enough so that it would slowly dissipate into across the street. People across the street on the south side of the road face the biggest challenge. I'm fortunate enough, I live right next to the pond, and the pond has been beneficial. It has done what it's supposed to do. But the people across the street, I feel bad for. I know my neighbor directly across the street has had three floods in his basement over the last 10 years. So I'm concerned about all those people on the other side of the street and all the problems they're going to have with water issues. And that might eventually translate into me because if the water behind me doesn't have a place to go across the street the way it's designed to do now, I'm going to have problems. So that really needs to be looked at seriously, and it really needs to be understood that this is not just a one-time issue, it's not once in a year, it's not a once every five years. This is a constant concern that everybody has. It's legitimate. And like I say, with that spring going through there, that there's always water in that area, always water. The other issue I have is the traffic. Right now, the biggest problem everybody has is going down King Road and taking the left turn. If you try to go down King Road at four, five, six o'clock at night, you might as well forget it. You're going to be sitting in a traffic line for 20 minutes to make a left turn. Same thing in the morning when you're trying to go to work. And with more people there, it's just going to make it more difficult to make that turn. I know that's probably not part of this whole meeting, but it's something that needs to be said because it is getting worse. It's a concern because people speed up and down Union Street. I'm afraid somebody's going to have an accident, there's going to be problems. I know that there are probably going to be continued building in that area. There already is, right there just up the street from that, across from the church, they're building those townhouses there, so there's going to be even more traffic. So I have a real legitimate concern about the safety of that road and how many people travel that road. I don't believe that Boone, FedEx, CNM, I think when they got their permits, I believe that they were kind of instructed not use King Road. That's not the case. There's tractor-trailers going down that road all the time from those companies, from other companies. I don't, it's a 35 mile an hour speed limit. I don't think they should be, they should be using that. I think they should be using 490, not our street. So I have a lot of concerns when it comes to traffic. Traffic and water are my, my two big concerns.
Okay.
And I hope they're addressed and looked at seriously because it's going to affect all of us here. You guys can go home someplace else, but we got to live there.
We get it. Understand.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, sir.
My name is Dave Abraham, and I live at 45 Gilead Hill. Questions? How expensive are these homes going to be?
Don't know that.
Reason I have a concern is that if you look at the railroad track, I'm not going to spend $200,000 to have a railroad right behind my house. So how long is it going to take to develop this? Or is it just going to be an eyesore until they eventually sell it? Okay, because I travel the road quite a bit. I'll second Larry's opinion. I'm not too happy with more traffic being in the area. Hubbard Park or Hubbard Springs, the new park over there, that's got a whole lot of new development going on right by St. Christopher's over there, by, opposite the fire department. So you've increased the traffic there, you're going to increase the traffic here. And again, getting out on Gilead Hill into King Road, there are times I have to drive five or six miles around instead of making a right-hand turn and a left-hand turn to get to 490. We're not alone, and water's a different concern with our neighborhood, but I'll figure out from you guys when I can talk about that one separately.
Okay.
A different issue. But, you know, but I think that's the thing, is like how long will it take to develop this? And what are we going to have? You know, I mean, it's, I've heard some different concerns here, so I'll raise that as well. Water's an issue, traffic.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'm LaVocla. I live at 106 Christina Drive. Just reiterating the traffic problem again as a mom. Union Street is a nightmare. It's dangerous for adults, it's dangerous for the teenagers that are driving, it's worse by the day. That's a huge problem. As a real estate agent, this market's going to fall and those are going to sit there on the railroad tracks, sorry to tell you. Nobody is going to pay $200,000 to live on a track with a train every eight to 10 minutes, I'm going to guess. So I'd hate to see another Filon development sit there unfinished, as is our neighborhood. It's been developed for, going on 25 years. A little extensive. So those are my concerns, traffic, that sitting there and just kind of becoming maybe something it wasn't planned on. You know, if they can't sell them for what they wanted, turns into rentals, turns into something else, brings values down and just becomes an eyesore like Kim said, the way people maybe live in them. So that's all my concern is.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? Seon, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing portion of this application for a second.
Yes.
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 I also vote yes. Looking at your plans, I understand you'll be, have to provide a certificate that the landscaping is in place.
That's correct.
One of the conditions. Is there any additional landscaping other than what we're looking at here with the trees that will be along the front of all the properties? Is there anything planned for the back?
Uh, not...
I mean, you're showing a hedgerow, you're not delineating exactly what it is. Or is that just existing brush? Or is that just existing brush?
This area right here where it's, you know, not the dark green, that's existing brush. And again, it's not all mature trees, but that's relative to a wetland where we're essentially not touching. We're proposing one tree per lot to be installed by the developer, a mix of, I think they're maples, maples, pears, and lilacs, kind of mix them up throughout the development. First comment, relative, I think it's Lot 4, in Roberto. There is that brush, but I think we talked to the developer and, you know, if there is some excess topsoil, maybe do a small burn or, you know, maybe plant a few white spruce in that area just to help kind of cover that view. I can kind of go through, hitting on some of the comments the community had.
Just to go back to the landscaping--
Yeah, sorry.
Appreciate you're going to look at it, but we're going to want to see something.
Absolutely. Next time we come back, we'll show some more landscape buffering. Like I said, Lot 4 along King Road there, just anybody from King Road, Roberto Drive, that area, you're not going to see backyards. And again, these are marketed for single-family sales, so, you know, it'll be up to the, eventually the homeowner, how they want to landscape their yard. These are not, you know, this is not an apartment complex where the Philones have rights in perpetuity. So I think we can propose and maybe plant some trees up front, and then whoever moves in there, more than welcome to, you know, spruce up their yard. Going on to some of the other comments, stormwater. So we are proposing stormwater management upon southwest corner of the site, collecting drainage from all the houses, all the road into this basin. The discharge point will be via pipe to the west end of the ditch that runs through there. We're not proposing to disturb the wetland, so the requirements will be required. We are just looking for confirmation from the state that they agree with the delineation. As Mike can allude to, the stormwater rules are set by the state, and you cannot increase the peak discharge compared to how it is today. So we've done that and then some. We've also proposed runoff reduction volume, which that's by retention, it more promotes soaking water into the groundwater table, eliminating runoff completely. And we've done that to the state requirements as well. Traffic, like you alluded to, it has been submitted to the county, and they do take the lead in terms of any potential mitigation. I haven't seen anything from them. I'm not a traffic engineer, but the general rule of thumb for single-family is AM, PM, peak hours, how they look at it, you know, going to work, coming home from work. Single-family homes is generally one trip per household. So you'll be looking at during, you know, the AM commute, maybe 23, 20 from the cul-de-sac and maybe 30 from the individual houses. So, but we'll take the queues from the county DOT, whatever they recommend, we'll incorporate. Like I alluded to, the wetland permit, one won't be required. I cannot, I don't know how much these are going to be going for. I know the Philones are obviously putting their money up to develop this, and, you know, I know they've done some research and they have realtors of their own, so I think they must have a good comfort level, they're going to be able to develop it. Just to, you know, to the town's benefit, a letter of credit will be required. And if, for whatever reason, you have a 2009 housing market issue and he doesn't develop it, money is available so the town can at least go in and ensure that the site is returned and stabilized and greened, so it's not, you know, a big, huge mound of dirt for five years. So that will be required by the town, and in an event that you need it, it'll be there. I think those are a lot of the big ones. I mean, I know, you know, trains, I agree, I don't know if, you might have a little bit harder issue and you might have to drop them, but I, you know, I think, we're going to see where that goes.
Okay.
So with that, you know, I don't know if the board has any other comments.
Any other board discussion? Eric?
What was your conversation with Dave Lindsay regarding the HOA?
My conversation with him was that the board wouldn't issue final approval without you reviewing it and giving it your thumbs up, and that a CVO would not be issued--
Okay.
--until it was in place.
When you said final approval, I wasn't sure if you were talking to final site plan approval or the, or the, a CVO is not issued.
Yeah, and I think it was, it was two steps, right? That the board won't issue final approval until you say it looks good, and then CFOs won't be issued until this is formally in place.
Well, I would assume you're not going, the developer is not going through an HOA plan yet, right?
He's hired an attorney and they've started to look at it, that's what he told me today. I don't know how far along they are.
Okay.
I don't know the specifics to that.
I guess just a, if that's the conversation, then no final site plan until we review the HOA submission, and no CVO until the HOA is approved by the Attorney General.
Does the approval of final prior to you reviewing that and approving it seem realistic in the next few months?
I think that would be the HOA submission to the AG--
All right.
--the Attorney General.
Okay.
And that I'm okay with.
All right.
If they put it in, I don't think it's entirely fair to say you've got to have it in place because of the fact--
All right. So I'll make, I'll make the condition that the HOA must be in place, which is approved by the Attorney General prior to any CVO issuance.
And a submission prior to final site plan.
All right, must be submitted to the town for final site, for, prior to final site plan approval, and in place, and approved by the Attorney General prior to CFO. Does that cover what you're looking for?
Yes.
All right.
So you have not been before the conservation board yet? Not, no.
There you go.
They, they, they meet at the last of the month, right? First?
Monday of--
First Monday of every month. So just submit your landscape plan.
Mike, have Sarah do it.
Yeah. Her name's on that plan.
Okay. No, because they're particular about having a registered architect, landscape architect do it, okay? So--
She can do the meeting too, I guess.
Yeah.
Anything else? Any other discussion?
I just need to clarify. Mike, you said you're waiting for the delineation from the Army Corps?
The delineation was done by the consultant. We're waiting for confirmation from the DEC, Army Corps slash DEC, that this is not part of the DEC wetland.
Right. And the two, the federal and--
State are separate.
Separate entities there, right?
Correct.
Okay.
It's been submitted, we're just waiting for confirmation back.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? And Michael, you're not waiting for anything else, you've got your updated stormwater plan, correct?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Any other discussion? Any other comments before we do seeker and then conditions?
And the town board taking names?
I'm sorry?
And the town board takes seeker?
They did for the incentive zoning, we're taking it for the site plan. Yeah. Okay, so as far as seeker, I will make a motion to declare the board lead agency, and based on evidence and information presented at this meeting, determine the application being an listed action with no significant environmental impact. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a vote?
Yes.
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 And also, yes. Conditions of approval, what I've gotten so far for this application is the condition the applicant shall supply a landscape plan drawn by a licensed landscape architect along with the required checklist to the conservation board for review and recommendation. Upon completion of the project, the applicant shall submit a landscape certificate of compliance to the building department for the landscape architect certifying that all approved plantings have been furnished and installed in substantial conformance with the approved landscape plan. Approval is subject to final approval by the town engineer and the commissioner of public works. The town engineer and the commissioner of public works shall be given copies of any correspondence with other approving agencies. The applicant shall comply with all pertinent Monroe County Development Review Committee comments. Copies of all easements associated with this project shall be provided to the assistant town council for approval, and all filing information, i.e. library and page number, shall be noted on the MyLars. Building permits shall not be issued prior to the applicant complying with all conditions. Application is subject to all required permits, inspections and code compliance regulations. The application, or the applicant to comply with all required life safety conditions and permits from the town fire marshal. The approved streetlight must be installed by the applicant at the intersection of the private road and King Road. Homeowners association shall be formed to manage the maintenance of the proposed private roads, storm sewers, and stormwater management areas. The HOA must be submitted to the town for final site plan approval and in place, approved and approved by Attorney General prior to the, any issuance of a CVO. The proposed stormwater management features will be privately owned and maintained. The town will require the property owner to enter into a stormwater control facility maintenance agreement with the town and to provide proper ease, access easements to the town. The access easements and the stormwater control facility maintenance agreement will need to be reviewed and approved by the Department of Public Works and the planning board attorney, and then filed with the county clerk's office prior to the signing of MyLars. Any other conditions on this application?
Just to clarify on the HOA submission, it sounded like you said for final site plan, just prior to final site plan?
Okay. So homeowners association will be formed to manage the maintenance of proposed private roads, storm sewers, stormwater management areas, and stormwater management areas. HOA must be submitted to the town prior to final site plan approval and in place, approved by the Attorney General prior to any CVO issuance. Cover it? All right. Any other conditions? No? With those conditions in place, application of Philone Properties Limited, 70 Quell Run Rochester, New York, 14624, owner for a preliminary subdivision approval of 23 lots to be known as 93 King Road subdivision in B, preliminary site plan approval to a 10 duplex and three single-family units, property located at 93 King Road in an R-115 district.
Sir, I can--
Yes.
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 I also vote yes, your preliminary is approved.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I had so much trouble finding something.
Yep, 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 yep. I'm going to get right there, just give me one second.
Okay. While you're doing that, for discussion, application of--
Thank you.
Sunburn Sales, Inc., 171 Route 5, Weedsport, New York, 13166 Rivers Edge and Party House, 31 Paul Road, Rochester, New York, owner, to discuss the proposed construction of a new Burn Dairy and Deli store and fueling facility, a property located at 29-31 Paul Road, Rochester, New York, 14624.
All set?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay. Oh, good evening, my name is Christian Brown, our senior executive vice president with Sunburn Sales, better known as Burn Dairy. Just let the board know, Sunburn Sales is the retail division of Burn Dairy. You've probably seen a bunch of our stores popping up around the Rochester area in the last few years. In front of you tonight for an informal presentation, the site is the Rivers Edge Party House Restaurant at 29-31 Paul Road. It is two parcels, one parcel being where the restaurant sits about here, which is about 20,000 square feet, and this other parcel here is the parking lot. Same ownership. I do know, it was a comment from the, that I would subdivide this to a re-subdivision and consolidate both lots. The property is 1.75 acres, so it's a very large lot, 536-foot of frontage on Scottsville Road, and approximately 360 on Paul Road. You can see, I don't have to, that the lot is very, very uniquely shaped, to say the least. It's been very challenging to lay out, I've been working on this for several months, to be honest with you. Also, to complicate things, there is a Sunoco pipeline going through here, this orange dotted line through the property. So I have been in talks for several months with ETP, which is Sunoco, in regards to the line, and what can go in there and what can't, and what needs to be done. I think I'm at a good point with them, and that's why I'm in front of the board. We're ready to do some soft digs, they are, and find the depth of everything. But I think we have everything, like I said. This plan has been submitted to them for their initial comments, and I'm going to work with them in concert with, you know, the town. To further complicate things, I'm going to be straightforward with you guys, I have some more issues here within Mobile Home Trailer Park to the west. Issues being, there were some previous encroachment agreements signed in approximately 2004 with the previous owners. Those encroachments run with the land, so I am stuck with them unfortunately. I am going to try, and I was going to ask Paul if we, I've been trying to contact the individual who owns that. I can't seem to get some contact information from him, so I'm sure you have some information you can get me?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. So the encroachments with the board, and it's going to explain some things here, is there's this little pavement area right here, you can see it right here? That is part of the encroachment agreement. Why, I don't know, but it was. So I have to maintain that, and that asphalt walkway it may be. So right now, you can see that the store is, abuts it, it's not going to encroach on it, but I still have to leave it with him. And that's the talks I need to have with him, to see if I can shift it a few feet. The document does not specify, the encroachment agreement just says I have to have, you know, that there. It doesn't say I can't move it, redo. Also, one of the trailers up here, you see this trailer right here? As you will see on the plan, I put all the dimensions on there, by the way. It encroaches onto this property by what, six and a half feet and three feet? Again, that's an encroachment I can't do anything about. He also, there's another trailer down here, I think it's .3 or something like that on the property. And then there's, I believe, there's also a shed down here, you'll see it on the site plan, superimposed. He has a right for that shed, which is very odd as well. So there is an agreement, it is filed, I do have it, I did speak with the current owner, Mr. Mazza, who owns the property now, he was unaware of that, to tell you the truth. But those encroachments do exist. Also though, Mr. Mazza, in this Rivers Edge building, encroaches on the Mobile Home property by three inches. So the kind of, you know, he had four encroachments, he had one, it was kind of mutually, well, it was a mutual encroachment agreement. Okay? So as you can see from, I'm proposing a 42, 4,232 square foot store, I'm sure you guys have seen our stores in the information package around, the green roof, I got them in Gates, actually tried, like, a long time ago, different dimensions. But that's the type of store, and as you can see from the site layout, I'm really pigeonholed of where I can put this. and as you can see from the site layout, I'm really pigeonholed of where I can put this. Right, you know, you have a gas line going through it here, I got some encroachment issues here. So I'm working with that. Curb cuts, I have spoken to the New York State DOT, it has a conceptual site plan about a month and a half ago, was submitted to Zach Stark at the DOT, with two full access driveways onto Scottsville, he shot me down in that. So right now, back in front of him, we have one full access drive here, and a right-in-only, okay, right here. Okay? It's right-in-only, you'll see the white arrow on it?
Yep, that's from the state?
Yes, that's from the state. That has been resubmitted to the state, I have had a traffic, survey done by, a traffic report done and study done by GTS Consulting out of Syracuse, that has been submitted to New York State DOT and to Monroe County DOT. Paul Road is a Monroe County DOT road, I have sent this conceptual plan to Brent Pennwarden at MC DOT, he said, let me see the traffic study, and let me take a look at that, and let's see what the state's comments are. So there's a bunch of emails going back between the state, MC DOT, myself, with my traffic engineer, but they do have that, I'd be more than happy to provide that to Paul if he wants the traffic study, if the town wants a cop, a copy of it, that's fine with me.
Submit with your plans, that'd be great.
Submit with your plans, okay. But again, that, that is in motion, they've looked at the plans, I'm trying to work with, generally the way I do things is I try to get a conceptual approval letter from those two entities, to make it easier for this board, so that's why I've jumped this, the first thing I did is sent it to them over a month and a half ago. So I think I should be, especially with the traffic study being sent in last week, I'll be in a good position to do that. Again, you can see the proposed driveways, one full access driveway right here, Paul Road, we'll call it a driveway and a quarter on Scottsville, with that right, right-in-only there. Plenty of site distance, traffic study was pretty clean, no mitigation measures required, good gaps, good site distance, traffic accident history was, was below state standard, so we're pretty good there. Four dispensers, eight fueling positions, we call them dive-ins right here, you can see the canopy, meaning they're just single, each side you can fuel on. The changes from the original plan that I gave you guys, just to let you know, was, you know, I had two unrestricted drives here, the plant, the building was 10 feet further to the west, and then I realized all these encroachments, and I had to move it forward to the east a little bit. Also, there were some comments done, said about the dumpster enclosure, as you can see, again, this, I keep going back to this unique shape of this site, I originally had the dumpster enclosure right here, and I knew it wasn't optimal, but it's really tough to fit the thing in, and not be within this gas line, you know, easement area and whatnot, so I moved the dumpster enclosure out here. It is, I do have an informational packet to you guys that I, we submitted earlier, you can see it's a nice fractured block, we don't do the wood anymore, that doesn't last, I do a fractured block, aged ivory to match the color of the store, so that would be dressed up nicely over here. I just wanted to show the intent now, that I'm willing to put some white, white spruce trees, I'll put trees around it if you want, I understand it is kind of sitting out here, but again, any ideas you guys got, let me know, but I'm willing to put some trees around it, and you can see, aesthetically, it's just not your, your typical, you know, dumpster enclosure. Fencing, I am proposing to keep the separation between the mobile homes and here, you'll see in brown, the fencing's a little jacked up here, don't mind it, engineer kind of screwed that up, but I am proposing a privacy, privacy fence right there, and that is in my information packet to you guys as well, okay? You know, that's a custom wooden privacy fence, western red cedar dog ear along the westerly border line, and I'm actually going to wrap it right around here. Again, I want to keep the separation there, okay, although it's not, I don't believe it's a requirement, but again, I like to keep my separation from there.
Is the entire length of the fence going to be six foot high?
That is correct. I have kept it, as you can see, it stops down here, so it's not going to affect anything, and I believe it stops, if I can't really see, right up in there. So it will not be towards the road.
Will Paul Road, Paul be considered a front for that side of the building where you see the fence along the?
Got two fronts.
Okay, you need a variance for that, okay.
Variance for a fence in a front yard?
Just the part that's in the front yard, yep. If it's over four foot, if it's over four feet.
Make it four feet? Okay, I'll work it out.
Yeah.
Okay. So, we'll get into the variances in a minute too, but, let me finish up here. Curb cuts, we got that, fencing, lighting, just to let you guys know, I use 100, actually I learned it here about 20 years ago from Letterstar, I use 100% dark sky friendly compliant lighting. I will, this is one I just built over in the town of Grease, on Maiden Lane, I will give you guys a lighting plan with foot candles, with images, I will make sure that there is no light spill, it'll be zero foot candles on all property lines. Again, you know, I'll leave that to my lighting engineer, after I get where I think the concept plan needs to be from this board, then I'll submit that to my lighting engineer, and they'll give me a package like this, and I will submit it to the board at that time. I'm used to doing that, so you will get one there.
Signs as well?
Signs as well.
Signage will be in there as well?
Yes, so what I did, I just gave you guys a quick flavor here, your signs are in the back of this package here. You know, monument sign, sign number one would be some sort of monument sign, you can see the location of it right here, okay? And then the building sign, built right into the dormer, and that's just our standard one you can see right here, just a standard Burn Dairy. And, you know, I invite you guys, if you want to go over to the town of Gates, I don't know if you've been to our Manitow Road store, I built that one about five years ago, I just built one in the town of Grease about a month ago, on the corner of Maiden and Fesner. Identical design and signage would be there, pretty much. Monument sign will, you know, be a little, little different, but yes, you'll have a full signage package, but I just wanted to give you kind of a flavor of what we have. Ped walk, I wanted, I would like to do pet access, there is this little asphalt, I think it's a bike tra, I forget what the name of the trail is.
Across the street, you mean?
Nope, right here.
Greenwood.
Yeah.
Is it a Greenwood, some, they call it some name, a heritage trail maybe, I don't know what it is, but, it's a bike, I don't know exactly what it is, but, so I wanted to tie into that, you can see my pedestrian access right there, okay, in case anyone wants to walk there or whatnot. So pedestrian access would be right here, they would not have to walk, you know, here, it would go right onto my porch, my stores have porches, so they would not have to go, you know, into the traffic here, traffic congestion. Stormwater, I'm way from there, I understand it's over one acre, I'm fully aware of the SWIP requirements, my engineer is fully aware of it, we will do our pre versus post, but I can assure you from this site right now, there's a lot of asphalt on it. So that's going to be, there'll be significant green space on this, and pre versus post, we're probably significantly less than what's there now. Okay, basically, this is a whole entire parking lot here, with a 20,000 square foot building. But again, we're further along, when I think the concept's where we have, my engineer will start, you know, all, all that stuff. In regards to variances, I will need several variances for this, and I go back to the uniqueness of the site. We're looking right now at a front yard parking variance, you can see my parking right here. As Paul stated, I did meet with him, there are two front yards for this, and it is a major road, you guys consider it, so therefore I need a 75-foot setback technically on both sides. Front yard, as you guys know, front yard parking is not allowed, your zoning says it's not allowed, it needs to be in the side or rear, but again, there's not much I can do with this site, and this little hook right in here, I propose parking right here. That would be one variance. A front yard setback for the building, right now, again, that would be 75 feet, I believe this one is 48 feet, you can see, it's pretty much the only spot I can put a building on this. Whoever builds here, me or anyone else, this is the only little corner, hence that's why they built there, that's going to be buildable. So therefore, I'd be asking for relief in 27 feet of relief. Lot depth, that's a whole nother question, me and Paul were trying to put our hands around, how do you figure lot depth on this? But there would be a variance, this line right here is 205 feet, it doesn't meet your required 250, I believe, but if you, if you take that from here to here, that's 200, I mean, can I take it from this corner to that corner? There's really no way of measuring this type lot. It's over 200 feet in most areas, that would be another variance who I'd need, but again, it's, the site's the site. Parking, I did find parking that was mentioned, and I'll read this to you here, the parking, your parking summary does not specify convenience store with petroleum sales, so if you look underneath my parking summary, I, number of automobile parking spaces required based on town code, section, blah, 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 other uses not specifically listed above shall furnish parking as required by the planning board. And that convenience store gas station is not listed in that section, right? So it's not listed, it specifically says to turn to the planning board for, you know, the recommendation, okay? Because the other, this is not a supermarket, right? So I think we can agree with that. So take a look at that, I think this, this section is applicable, as you can see, I have ample parking. Right now, I have 43 parking spaces, okay, on, on the site plan. Eight of those, by the way, just to let you know, are underneath the fuel canopy, but in most of your municipalities, they do count as parking because they are private. But that 43 includes those eight underneath the fuel canopy. And then dumpster setback, and now fence, you said, if it's, now talk to Paul about that. The dumpster right here, again, the location of it, is approximately 42 feet away from Paul Road, so therefore, because Paul Road is a front yard, there's two front yards, that requirement is 75, so I would need a relief of 33 feet there. Again, I know it sounds like I have three or four variances, but again, I go back to the unique shape of this lot. So I will cut myself off there, if you have any, I'm open for any comments.
One question on the comment that was made by the town engineer is that the HVAC units, it doesn't look like anything will be on the roof based on?
No, I'm sorry, I should have clarified that, actually, I think there's a note over here in the plan notes, our HVAC pad is on the ground, we do not do roof dance, it's underneath an enclosed, roofed porch, okay? But that fence behind it is the buffer.
Right, so it's an overhang over the top of it?
Yes.
But it's open walled?
Open walled, that is correct.
Along the back of your building?
For airflow.
Along the back of your building.
That is correct.
And then you'll have the six-foot fence beyond that?
That is correct, that would be my buffer, and that's another reason I decided to put that up there.
Okay.
Landscaping, again, I can make it, you know, I showed some quick two-and-a-half-inch red maples along the frontage, I wanted to keep these remaining trees, I always like to try to keep trees like everyone else does, but again, once this concept plan, you know, moves forward and I get ETP, Sunoco, and, and you guys' comments, I'll, you know, dress the landscaping up however you guys feel necessary.
You can submit your plan for your landscaping to the conservation board, they'll make recommendations as well.
Gotcha.
Type of trees?
Yep.
Size of trees?
Wonderful.
You want to do that through the town building department, and they meet the first of the month, first week of the month.
Okay. Got to be a registered landscape architect, Paul?
Yes.
Great.
Any comments, are there going to be any electric charging stations?
There will be no electric charging stations at this time. We have plenty of room on the site to do that. If, in the future, I tell every board this, because they asked that, when it, when it comes time, if it comes time, we'll be more than happy to put them in, but right now, we don't feel it's necessary.
Okay.
So you said you pulled the building forward?
Yes, right here, the plan you have was five feet off the property line, but we would be blocking that encroachment sidewalk, so I could not do that.
Still looks pretty tight though, I mean?
It is, I'm not going to say, it is very tight, it is, our building will be touching the asphalt, that's why I need to get, to contact the owner of that property, and see if I can move that for him, or if it's really necessary. Okay? So, no, I agree with you, it is very tight.
Is it? I just see you have 30 feet between the parking on the side there.
Over here?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why I made it, I like to have 30 feet.
Well, because you don't have a, yeah, I mean, you could bring that down, but...
I like 30 feet, people backing in and out, you know?
Yeah, no, I just, I don't think you're going to like building a, your brand-new building on top of a mobile home park and a piece of asphalt, and the fence is going to be all tight there, so I'm just trying to buy you some feet, you know?
Yeah. Believe me, I've been looking for some feet on this site.
Yeah.
Is that asphalt or is that stone? The maps, it looked like a, just a stone path, actually.
It is asphalt.
It is?
We walked there tonight.
Broken rail up, okay.
I can show you pictures on my phone, we almost got attacked. We almost got attacked by a German shepherd, true story, it was quite the night we've had so far. He come out around the sidewalk and we both ran, so, but it is asphalt.
Okay, any other feedback, Matt, or comments?
Well, I just, I guess, I guess I would just say is, you know, you've got the double-loaded parking there, we just talked about parking, I guess I would just ask you to look, you know, and I don't know, Mike Hanscom can weigh in, weigh in on this too, but if the number of, what we really need is 43 spaces, can we get those five out of there and you slide that building over?
I was looking at that, but those parking, especially those ones around the store, are very critical. If we were a dairy store, as you guys know our stores, and didn't sell so much dairy to, you know, elderly people or kids and stuff, I would tell you that would not be a problem for the average store, but we really take those, and I will look at that, and me and the owner will look at the layout again, but those are critical being, you know, these ones, they'll be okay for store employees and, you know, average people, but generally, we like to have this configuration, actually, most of the time, I have configuration more, five more over here. But I will look at that, again, I went to the site, I've been, you know, really focusing on Sunoco and this, once I meet with this trailer park owner, I'm going to hopefully have some questions answered. But yes, I will look at that as well, I thought the same thing.
Ice cream sales on that side of the store?
Ice cream would be out front, just like our typical store.
Okay.
The ice cream window would be right here, underneath the porch. There would be an entrance over here though as well, single door here, double door here, and that ice cream window like you guys have down here in Charlie and my gates, is right there.
Yeah, and I mean, you, you lose a parking spot there too.
Where?
In front of the ice cream window, because you get people that stand there and nobody can park there.
Yes.
And so, I mean, if...
I must say though, I hope this one does the amount of business that one does down there, because that's, does very, very well in Charlie for ice cream, we believe it at that, exceptionally well.
Yeah, and I don't know that it works or doesn't work, but I guess just, you know, if you look at the, you've got the, the shared space for, that's required for the ADA spots, you know, once again, I think you have that lined up at your front door, is that the way?
That is correct, that's why I do that, yes. Some people put them at the end, we do have, just, it was in the information packet that I gave you guys, we do things a little differently than we did back then, we do flush parking now.
Yeah, I was just going to ask if it's...
Yeah, just kind of the flush.
With the ballards?
Yeah, with the ballards, they're much cleaner than, you know, a curb, much safer as well.
And that's going to be the short leg and the long leg, so the side and the front?
That is correct, yep.
Yeah, I don't have anything else to add.
I'd be very curious to hear what the state has to say about the driveway cuts, to be honest with you, because you already got a bad situation down there, you got two lanes of southbound traffic going down to where they narrowed down to one lot.
He was 100, he was 100% fine with this one right here.
85% of the time, the people are drag racing off that light, because they don't want to get stuck behind somebody, they want to get in there first, so...
Yep, they have the traffic report and I leave it up to them, so...
Look of the building will be as you depicted in this picture?
That is correct.
The green metal roof with the...
Yep, I, if you guys, you're going to require building elevations, which I will get to you, again, I'd just rather show you a picture of a real photo than a black and white building elevation, but we will have a building elevations app, you know, we can submit at the time.
Let's see, mobile homes you've answered, commanding the properties you've answered, the refrigeration, the outside units are just HVAC, refrigeration is all interior with the machinery, correct?
That is correct.
The only thing outside will be the HVAC?
HVAC units, yes.
Okay, all right.
No, just one question, so the, there's quite a bit of distance between the Fuel Island and the store, maybe 80, 90 feet?
Yes.
Any thought of like striping a pedestrian aisle so that, or, I mean, how does that work at your stores? Do you do stuff like that?
We don't, generally we don't.
I mean, I like the pedestrian link to the, to the trail, I'm just thinking about people getting...
A conflict?
To the store.
Yeah. No, I generally leave that up to them, I, none of my sites, and I have sites, I got one in Lafayette, it's probably 107 feet away, up off 81, but, generally, you know, that's another reason they're right in, right out, you know, to kind of get some traffic right in, right here, to go to the thing and then get them out of here, right, without going up there, it's kind of a circulation thing, that's what we're hoping happens, you know?
Pump your gas and go park if you want to go inside?
Huh?
Pump your gas and go park inside if you, park if you want to go inside?
Well, they can, but, you know, some of the customers, a lot of people don't go come inside, you know?
But I mean, your idea is you want them to pump their fuel and then go park near the building if they're going to come in.
If they're going to come in, and several people do do that, because I use the fact that we sell a lot of ice cream and a lot of milk, so therefore, people, you know, are going to go park and they're going to shop and hopefully buy, you know, a box of cereal with us as well.
Okay. Anything else?
Go ahead.
Michael, any comments, other than what you've already given them?
Just regards to the parking, well, I like the 10 by 20 foot parking spaces, the town only requires nine by 19.
Yes, we're adamant on 10 by 20s, I drive a big pickup truck, the owner drives a duly diesel truck, we all have RV, so we're really adamant on 10 by 20s.
Okay, no, I'm more than happy with 10 by 20s, I'm just going to let you know that you can...
I did, I did read that, too.
Okay.
I don't like to skimp on them, somebody smashes their door, and they're going to call me.
Paul, any other comments?
Why didn't we move the dumpster enclosure?
We didn't want it, oh.
I did, because the comments were made by the DRC and the town engineer, so I will blame those two, not myself.
We asked them to move it away from the trailer park, at our DRC.
Because they didn't want it to smell the notch of the trailer park.
I'll be more than happy, believe me, to move it back to where it was.
If you look at where it was, I sort of like where it was.
I did, too, but...
Because now it's like a big beacon out there in the front, saying hi.
That's why I did what I did, yes, I had a reason for it, it wasn't, I did not want to...
So what would you do where it was, I forget now, was it facing...
Right here, just facing right in that little section.
Right in that island.
The doors faced the store.
The doors would face this, yes, yep, that's the way I had it. I'd be more than happy to move it back there, I thought that was the best location as well, especially, you know, I got a fence around it, actually, I have the fence around it, fractured block, and the wooden fence, and I had trees around it, too, so, I would just like to follow people's comments, so I don't...
I get it. Does the board have any kind of...
Put it back?
Okay.
Put it back?
You got all those cars.
Put it back? Paul said put it back.
Paul's right.
Paul's right.
Eric, any comments?
Lot of encroachment issues, good luck, and, but that's it from a legal perspective.
This, this pipeline, do you need any kind of a, do you need anything from the oil company?
I do not, believe it or not, no, but I, no, I do not, I don't need anything legally.
They have like a right-of-way easement over it, or something?
That's a whole nother discussion, we won't get into, they seem to think they have a 50-foot easement, but legally, I have been in house counsel, and we're convinced 100 different ways, they do not have a 50-foot easement, although I am, I am honoring them, as you can see, and trying to keep everything out of it, building-wise, I'm not stupid, you know what I'm saying, but we have told them they don't have a 50-foot easement, this was done a long time ago, they do not have one. Matter of fact, when you first talked to them, they didn't realize they had a pipeline here, but that's, I had to assure them that they did. But, but no, we're past that, now we have people, and they're going to actually come out and do the soft dig, we have a protocol that they have to come out, I have to give them weights of vehicles going over the top of it, it's pretty intensive, but no, there's actually not a permit, believe it or not, there's just guidelines, which, I'm, you know, I'm going to follow their guidelines to a T. My engineer and their engineer, we've sent so many emails back and forth, and they have this plan, so...
What's your traffic pattern for your fuel trucks, for the tanks at the end of the island there, and what, what time of the day do they normally get there, can they control that?
We control it, we're, we're burn dairy, it's not burn dairy fuel, because it's not burn dairy, but, but we control, it's not ExxonMobil where they dispatch themselves, like we used to be, so we can, I think this was, yeah, this was a mobile, I had a mobile, but, so we control those, the hours, I don't know, generally, they deliver between 7:00 and 7:00.
What are the hours of your operation?
Hours of operation are 365.
24?
All of our new stores are 365, we never close them once we open them.
So, if the state requires that to be a one-way in from the east, will they come in Paul Road?
I don't believe, I think they're going to, I think they're going to come in Paul Road and probably go out here, but if they leave this the way it is, I'm sure they're going to sneak in here, here, and come right back out, which is going to be nice.
So if you could have, just the turning radiuses of those trucks, the truck to show that it can, it's tractor-trailer, is...
Yep, I'll give it a turning, we'll...
So that, to make sure that it can fit in what the state requires you to do, so that we can see that it can...
Yeah, we always, I do internally, I do traffic radiuses already.
Okay.
If you guys, yeah, we always do them anyways.
With regards to the monument sign, is that in an easement?
Who's easement?
Gas?